Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 1st, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Jim Went. I'm the chairman of this board. Our apologies to our applicants on Crescent Place for not being able to move forward last month because we're all without the phone and/or internet because of the storm. We have four members present tonight, which means that for both applications, you know, an affirmative vote of four members is required to carry the day for your application. So it would have to be unanimous vote. So I, what we typically do is, well, in the interest of moving business forward, we will hear, you know, do the public hearing portion, and then we can have some motions and discussion. If, if we think that we were going to need the participation of a fifth member, we can delay a vote until we have that member present. But at least for now, I think we can proceed with just hearing the applications and see how we make out. So we are in a, obviously, a virtual forum, so you'll have to bear with us. I'm going to ask everybody to self mute unless you are speaking. And for the members in particular, I think what I'd like to do is, rather than have questions as presenters present, I think it would be best served if each presenter makes their presentation in totality, and then I can call the roster as to who might have questions. So we can have questions and answers without interruption, because it's going to be difficult in this forum to kind of stop. So if we can, just proceed with letting the folks make their entire presentation, and then I'll call each of you to have a turn if you've got any questions, and then we can proceed in that fashion. So with that, I guess we will open file 1403, which is 51 Crescent Place. I'm not going to read the entirety of the public hearing call. It's been, it's been published. Am I correct to assume that Mr. Lewis, you're going to be presenting this application on behalf of the applicants? If not, please correct me.
No, that is correct, yes.
Okay, so I'll turn things over. Will, I don't know who is at the controls there, whether you have the ability to share a screen, or whether Georgia's doing that, but at this point, we'll open the hearing and we'll, we'll turn things over to Mr. Lewis.
Okay, thank you.
I actually have one thing to interrupt with. Sorry, Tracy. I did send you an email this afternoon with the script that the chairperson has to read at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if you have that handy. It's unfortunately a couple pages long, but...
Good lord, is this the thing that's on the back? I was not, I was out today. I was moving my, I was not in the office today. So I do have on the back of the agenda...
No, it's different. It's, um...
All right. So we, so there's a script we need to read?
Right.
All right. I apologize, I don't have that in front of me, but if you have it, I'm, I, if you could kindly...
Will, can I read it in Jim's place?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. Thank you for doing that, Georgia.
You're welcome, and I'm sorry, guys. Like I said, it's a little long-winded, but let me open this up for us. Okay, so this is Georgia Contra on behalf of Jim Went, chairman of the Monroe BBA. Good afternoon. Today is September 1st, and it is 7:43. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We officially called the meeting to order. Please allow me to confirm the members and staff anticipated participants that are present and can hear me. I will be asking each participant to identify themselves, so I can place your name next to your call in line. And I apologize, I have to look at two different screens here to do so. As far as members, we have Chairman Jim Went. Please say here.
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, Sarah Harris.
Here.
Marion Calo.
Here.
Dominic Smiraglio, is that, I'm sorry, Dom.
Here, Smiraglio, no problem.
Okay, and then we are missing one member. Will, I don't have the role in front of me.
We're actually missing Ben Mahini and Spencer Wesley.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as staff, Will Agresta.
Here.
Joe Chapman.
Here.
And Rick Schultz.
Is here.
Present.
There, there we go, thank you. All right.
And Barbara Schellenberg.
I'm sorry, and Barbara Schellenberg.
Here.
Okay, I hereby declare that we have a quorum and call a meeting to order. A copy of the agenda and related materials have been posted to and can be found on the town of Monroe's website, monroe CT dot org for public inspection. This public meeting is conducted remotely in compliance with section one of Governor Lamont's executive order number 7B dated March 14th, 2020, using go-to-meeting electronic conferencing technology. Using technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so please, please be sure that you have accessed the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote public meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting using technology is granted solely by the technology provider on first access basis and is not controlled by the town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that we will not exceed this participant limit for this meeting, should it appear that we are approaching said limit, so that any member of the public is denied access to this meeting, Jim, as chairman, reserves the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Please take note of the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting. Number one, the meeting is being conducted in real time. Number two, the meeting is open to the public. Number three, any member of the public may listen or view to this meeting anonymously. Four, that the meeting is being recorded, and while we ask that you mute your microphone unless recognized to speak, that anything you say or do is displayed on your screen may become part of the recording. Five, that the recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days. And six, that the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable time in town hall or upon written request. This meeting shall follow standard parliamentary procedure. However, I ask all participants to follow these special rules in addition. Please mute your microphone so as to reduce the background noise at any time when you are not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting if in use. And as set forth on the agenda, this meeting will feature public participation. So to my knowledge, we have not received any written comments from the public between the date the agenda was posted through one hour of the start of this meeting. And additionally, we are going to turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do, allow me to cover some ground rules of this remote meeting to ensure effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure an accurate recording. The chairman will introduce each matter on the agenda. If a vote is anticipated, he will ask for a motion and a second. After introduction of the matter upon motion, he will invite each member by name for discussion. After all members have had an opportunity to speak for the first time, he will repeat the invite to each member in the same order until there is no further comment. Please hold your comments until you are recognized. Everyone will have an equal opportunity to speak. Upon the conclusion of the discussion, he will call for a vote on the motion, if applicable, or take action to conclude each matter on the agenda. All votes taken in the meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and please also remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate an accurate recording in minutes. Thank you, everyone. Tracy, we can now turn it over to you, and I will share my screen with the application. I'll let you guide me as to what you need to show, okay?
Georgia, before you start, Tracy, thank you. Jim Went, for the record, thank you, Georgia. And again, we will reopen with file 1403. This is 51 Crescent Place. Mr. Lewis, you may begin.
Okay, my name is Tracy Lewis. I'm a licensed land surveyor. My offices are at 260 Main Street in Monroe. I'm here representing Mary Falco, the applicant, and with her is Samantha Alveson. You'll see, yeah, you'll see Samantha's name on the screen. Mary is in the white blouse, and Samantha is in the darker blouse. Crescent Place is, is a crescent-shaped road that accesses Main Street from two points. It is on the southern end of, of Main Street, near the Trumbull Line. This is an existing, the existing home at, at 51 Crescent Place, sits on a little more than one acre lot, and it is a non-conforming lot. And, and we are asking, they're asking to build, renovate their home and put a second story on the house to accommodate their, their family. We have, we have a narrative which should be part of your package. I don't know if the drawings are available on the screen, if we could do that. I would like to look at, uh, keep going. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Trying to look for my drawing, keep going, keep going. These are house plans. One more, one more drawing, I believe. I hope, no. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Oh, that's it, that one there.
Do you need to zoom in on anything, Tracy, or is that okay?
That's okay for now. I think as everybody got the plan in front of them, the zoning location survey, I think, kind of shows, you know, what they want to do. The zoning location survey shows two, two views. The, the upper view is an enlarged, and the, and the lower view is, is a larger scale which, which shows the, the development area, the construction area on the house. The property, as I might say, is shaped like a pistol, and the house is kind of in the barrel of the pistol down at the end, very narrow portion of the lot, and adjacent to Crescent Place. Right now, the home, a driveway along the southern side of the house into a detached garage in the rear of the, rear of the house. So the, the applicants have asked for, for a few variances, mostly in regards to, well, in all cases, in regards to setback due to the narrowness of the lot. So if you, if you refer to your drawings, I'll go through the variances, and I'll, and, and after that, I'll describe the projects in a little more detail. If you have the narrative in your package that, that Mary and Samantha made up, it's like the most historic narrative I ever saw. It's very clear, and, and I'll run through it. I, I can't do better than that, but I, I will, will obviously run through all the items. The variances requested are, are on the, particularly on the north side. You'll see on your plan, there's a five yard, five-foot side yard setback to the side yard, and that is for construction of the second floor of the home within the setback, but yet is over the existing house, so there's no new encroachment in those two areas on that side, on the north side of the house. The same thing on the north side of the house, the replacement of the garage, the existing garage is going to be removed, and a new garage is going to be placed in that approximate area in the back of the house. You will see that we've asked for, we've asked for a seven-foot and 10-foot side yard to the new garage, and you will see that the old garage is 6.9 feet from the, from the property line, the one that is going to be removed. So in all cases, on that north side, there, there's not any greater encroachment of the, of the building. You will note the hatched, crosshatched area also on the north side of their, of the, of the property, and that is an easement that's being granted from the adjoining owner, Mr. and Mrs. Wicklund, and that will provide for access of the driveway into the new garage, and also provide some lawn and enjoyment area for them immediately behind the house. The driveway will be a common driveway shared by the Wicklins and the Falcos. On the east side, we are fronted on Crescent Place. I, I might point out, I'm sorry, I use northeast, and that's, you know, one of those crazy things that surveyors do, but the north is, is up the page. So the east side would be Crescent Place. We've asked for a, a variance for a front stair that goes out into the, towards Crescent Place. And additionally, a first-story addition is within the existing porch. So the only, only thing we're asking for is for the stairway, which really is, gives it a little more, better presentation with the front on Crescent Place. I think typically, we know that stairs without covers, you know, are not, not difficult to be in the setback, so we've asked for a variance for that. On the south side, on the south side, we've asked for a variance for, for the new addition, which would provide for a staircase to the second floor, and also better access to the basement for the, for the hatchway. This is a critical part of the, of the design, because currently, the accessway to the second floor, the small second floor that they have on the house existing, the staircase is not safe and not, not in a good location. So this will provide better access to, to the living quarters in the second story. We've also asked for a variance of the garage closer to the, to the property line, which will provide a better access into the garage, because the garage will be facing on the north side, and will have, have a really good, safe access into the garage. Right now, that existing detached garage that there is almost unusable. To back a car out of that is unsafe. It's just not, not a, a good situation. We did not need any variances for coverage calculation. We are eliminating the driveway on the south side. That south side driveway will be removed, and also the parking, they once in a while park out on Crescent Place in, within the right-of-way. So there's a paved portion, you'll see in the front, on the east side of the lot, which, which that parking space will be eliminated, and that driveway will be eliminated, and a clearly defined edge of pavement for Crescent Place will be shown. So the only driveway will be the driveway that they share with the Wicklins, and the driveway coming off the Wicklin common driveway into their, their new garage.
Tracy, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
I think, Spencer, did you join us while we were in the middle of this?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I just want to recognize to the record that member Spacey Wesley joined this around the beginning of the presentation. All right, Tracy, you can keep continuing.
Okay, if, if you want me to start again, I can. I mean, is, is he, are they okay? Everyone okay, or do you want me to start again?
No, I don't think you need to start again. You can, you can continue.
Okay, okay, thank you. So those are, those are the variances that are needed. Attending the, the common driveway access and easement area from the Wicklins, they, they've agreed to, to have a, a grant of common access easement permitting ingress and egress passage. Installation and maintenance of subsurface drainage improvements. There are some drain, there is a drainage pipe that goes across, and they have retained Dave Bajorklin, we're all familiar with David Bajorklin, to do some engineering services on, on the property. And so there will be a maintenance agreement with that, with that drainage. And obviously, maintenance, maintenance agreements for the, for the, for the driveway, the common driveway, which will, which will go across 53 Crescent Place and go out to the front. I might add that, that originally, we had, we had anticipated, hadn't anticipated the property line being so close to the, to the building, but that's just how the, the survey worked out. We did talk, they did talk to the Wicklins, and there was some consent to, you know, grant this property in fee to the Falcos. And what happened was, it was, it was just becoming too cumbersome with their, with the Wicklins bank. So, so, so the easement was the best resolution for that. So that's why the easement was done. So, so that, that's how that kind of evolved. The existing garage, the existing garage will be torn down, and the new garage will be attached to the, to the existing, to the existing house, a new second-story building with an attachment, so it won't be a detached garage any longer. The living room and dining room and kitchen will be, be extended, and the staircase will, will, like I suggested, will bring, bring everything to code. And the front foyer, as we discussed, the front foyer will become bigger, which will be totally enclosed in the existing porch that's there now. So really, we haven't, we haven't changed any of the, any of the, any of the footprint other than on, on the south, on the south side. So that's, that's kind of the, the gist of the, of the expansion of the, of the house. I'd like to go through the hardship. The hardships are the pre-existing non-conforming lot shape. So on the upper portion of this drawing, you'll see the lot shape. So, so it expands out in the back and into a much wider area. I've demonstrated some, some steep slopes in that area, so that makes that back part pretty inaccessible. I've also utilized, you'll see, there's a couple of test pits there that you'll see in, in kind of a flat area. We've utilized that area for the reserve septic system. Connecticut health code requires that when you do an addition, or, or you use some part of your land for an addition, or let's say a pool addition, whatever, whatever it might be, accessory building, that you have to prove that you have another area where your septic can go. Currently, their septic is in the front of the house. So we, we've had it designed and, and by, by septic installer, it's called a B100, and we did do a reserve area up in that flatter portion. The second thing that we point out is that the existing staircase, staircase is not to code, and, and accessing those rooms in, in the second floor, the, the existing second floor, that, that staircase will now be brought up to code and made safe. And also, with the, with the existing hatchway will, or for the new hatchway will have better access into the basement and utilities. The garage that's there now, as I had discussed, you know, poses a, a not a safe, not a good safe issue. It's very hard to access that, that, I believe it's a single-car garage. Am I right, Mary? It's a single-car garage now, and the new garage will be a two-car garage. And, and backing out of that garage or entering that, that garage is, is just not, not a safe situation. They have, they have two young children, very young children, and they have a growing family, and, so, so they want to make this back of their house safe, and, and you'll see that for years and years, it's been occupation of that hatched area. Also have a little playhouse for the kids in the back, so, so that area will be, kind of give them a little more room to, to, for their backyard. I think that that covers most everything, and those are the hardships. I mean, right now, they want to grow their family and be in Monroe. Mary's a teacher. Samantha's an EMT, both working on the front lines. So they, they want to stay in Monroe and, and want to bring their family up in Monroe. I, I think that this is, this is not impacting the neighborhood. As you saw, I know some pictures flipped through in the front, there's, there's quite a few double-story family, single-family homes on Crescent Place. There's some really old homes, there's some very new homes. There's a lot of mixed people on, on Crescent Place. And I, and I believe, I believe that we've gotten a favorable opinion from, from the neighbors in the area as well. I think this will, this will be a, a big upgrade for, for this, for this property. So that being said, Mary and Samantha have, I covered everything.
I believe you have. There's, there's not much really that we can add to what you've said, other than answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Yeah.
This is Jim Went, for the record. Does that conclude the presentation, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, if, if there's any questions, certainly.
What we're going to do at this point, I'm going to call each member individually, and then they will each have an opportunity to ask any questions they have, and we'll, and then we'll circle through. I'm going to start with Marion. Marion, do you have any questions? We, we can't hear you. You, you appear to be muted. We can, we can see her.
Hang on one second, please. I'm talking on my phone.
There we go.
I'm talking on my phone.
All right, we have you now.
Okay, I said, no, I have no questions.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Dom, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
All right. Spencer, do you have any questions? Spencer, can you hear me? Can you unmute yourself and let me know if you've got any questions, please?
No, I'm okay.
Thank you. Again, Jim Went, I have a couple of questions. One, when, when was this house originally built? 1912. So the present location of the house then far precedes the institution of the zoning regulations, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I do not have any further questions. Thank you both for your service to the community, and if there's nothing else from the applicant, we will close this. And if there's nothing else from the applicant, we will close this public hearing. Seeing none, thank you all very much. We will close file 1403-51 Crescent Place, and we will move on to file number 1404-64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. This is a little bit different matter. This is an appeal from a zoning enforcement order. So how we're going to proceed with this particular application is we will hear first from the town, presumably Joe Chapman, the zoning enforcement officer, to outline his findings and the basis for his zoning enforcement order. We will then proceed as we just did and have any questions, if the board members have. And then the applicant, Astro Land Holdings LLC, will have their opportunity to discuss and present their argument as to why they think this order is an error. And we can ask questions then. There may be some members of the public that wish to be heard thereafter, which we will hear from if interested. And then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, since the burden is on the applicant here to demonstrate their case. They get the last word. And it's important to note for the members that once we do close the public hearing and enter into deliberations, the staff, since this is an appeal of a staff ruling, they cannot be parties to the discussion during our deliberative session. So it's important to emphasize that if you have any questions for the staff, and you want their input, we need to be mindful that those questions need to be asked while we're doing the public hearing portion before we close the hearing. So with that, we will open the hearing and begin with Mr. Chapman.
Good evening, everyone. I assume you can all hear me?
Joe, before you start, as all might know, Ben Mahini, another member, just joined us as we begin this process. Can you just acknowledge your presence, Ben?
Ben's here.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, great. I had issued a cease and desist order on June 24, 2020, to Mr. Arnold Karp, Astro Land Holdings, basically Land Holdings, located in New Canaan, Connecticut. And on the paperwork, identified the map lot and the zone of the property in question. And the cease and desist is to Mr. Karp, and please be advised you are in violation of the Monroe zoning regulations as follows: zoning articles 4.3, 6.4, 6.5, 7, and 8. Special exemption permit 13-05-S, file 1430A, which includes: operating without a valid permit and in excess of the authorized land use activities; non-permitted use of premises as a commercial quarry, including unauthorized import and export of material and building materials, excuse me, of earth and building materials and processing of such materials; non-permitted import and onsite deposit of fuel materials of unknown content and origin; non-permitted site activity and disturbance exceeding maximum permitted active work area allowed, and the overall site disturbance vertically and horizontally; non-permitted discharge of the Pepper Street Section 2, stormwater management basin, lack of erosion and sedimentation controls. The cease and desist is effective immediately upon receipt. And let me just scroll up a little bit. Thank you. And then the usual verbiage follows after that, as far as the appeal and the process for appeal and cease and desist. And then all the persons involved, the town, that the letter has been sent to. So that essentially, that's the sum of the cease and desist order. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 bullet points contained in the cease and desist. I don't know if anybody has any... Would you like me to repeat any of those? If you don't have them in front of you, I'm happy to repeat any of them. We did receive a letter appealing the cease and desist before the scheduled date for that. I don't have a copy of that with me. I've got it in the office, but I do have it in the files.
This is Jim Went. For the record, Joe, before we move on to questions, can you, if you can, briefly outline what... Your order talks about activity in excess of what was authorized under previous permits. Can you briefly describe what specifically you're referring to there?
Yes. I don't know how many of you have actually been to the site. I've been there numerous times and took photographs typically of each time we were there. That was, of course, with permission of the owner and the site manager. We did sign in and out when we left each time. It's been clear that over the past months, we'll say, that additional material has been brought into the site. You can just look at the string of photographs, and you can see that there is additional earth material, asphalt, concrete, rebar, mixed construction debris of a... Let's, for example, I'm thinking if there was materials, grates, road grates, catch basin tops, concrete as if it was ripped out of a roadway. There's obviously millings piled up. And this material has moved around the site. It's been... We'd go there for one visit. It was not there. We'd go back, take a picture of it. There was piles of it there. And it's scattered essentially, more or less, through the front portion of the property. This, of course, I'm not speaking about any of the activity in the back of the property. It's north. That's where the excavation is. I think everybody is well aware of the fact that that area is severely overdug, not only vertically but horizontally, according to what was originally applied and approved for. The whole is rather staggering in size. I can think of only one of the locations that I'm familiar with here in Connecticut where it's that big. I have seen trucks being loaded and leaving the property. Obviously, we didn't stick around to kind of outdo our welcome. We were just there, drove around the upper and lower portions of the property, took some photographs, and left. We weren't trying to get in the way of the men working or impose on the property owner in any way other than making a site visit. But clearly, there is... Myself and Rick Schultz, the town planner, had typically gone on these visits together in a town truck. And there was clearly piles of material that would suddenly appear, and then it would be gone, or there were new piles that had been relocated, moved around the property. So I think when we talk about import and onsite deposit of fuel materials of unknown content and origin, I can only say that the content appeared to be what I could see visually. I didn't take any samples with me, but you can look at the photographs, and I certainly looked at them and looked at the site itself, and I could see what was there. I mean, I was in the construction trade for many years. I know a pile of construction junk when you see it.
Okay, again, Jim Went, for the record, thank you, Joe. And again, before, I just want to make sure, I have been to the site. I am familiar with it. But I just want to make clear for the record that it's your position, that there isn't approved site plan for activity on this property. As I understand it, it's your and the town's position that the level of excavation that has occurred here exceeds the amount, both in terms of its magnitude and depth than what was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that...
That is an unequivocal yes on my part.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to understand the basis of the order. That was my understanding. Before we move on to the applicant's presentation, I just want to make sure that other members, again, don't have any questions for Mr. Chapman. Marion, do you have any questions of Mr. Chapman before we move on?
Yes. This original application for this property, was it to be made into a subdivision of lots? Or was it to be made as an excavation?
My understanding is that, Marion, I don't have any of this information in front of me. As far as I know, it was one parcel. What the eventual plan for that was, I don't know. I can't address that. What I'm specifically looking at is, though, is what's happened there since that approval took place.
So that they were given permission to just dig a hole? I mean, I don't understand this. Why is it...
No, my understanding of what happened there is that the... Obviously, when the original approval was granted, there were certain parameters in which the developer of the property was constrained by, vertical and horizontal. So in other words, you're going to be digging down to zero. If you're now digging down below zero, you've exceeded that. If your limits of disturbance vertically is supposed to be x, and you've gone x plus y, well, then you've exceeded the original approval. And I think it's pretty clear to looking at the site that, yes, that's exactly what's happened.
Marion, this is Jim again. I just want to clarify. In our packet, there were two large-sized site plans entitled Pepper Street Business Park Site Plan dated October 26, 2005, revised to December, or I'm sorry, November of '05. Are those representative of the original plan that was approved? I don't know if that's a question that Joe can answer. Maybe Will.
Well, you also have, this is Will Agresta. Those are the maps that were submitted by the applicant, I believe. And there are also, in addition to those, there were other materials that were sent to you that included some background information of the site. And in there is copies of the then-Zoning Board of Appeals approval, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission Special Exception Permit Approval, which describes the project that was approved. And there is a map, a one-page map, that shows you, I think it's a colored map, and it shows you two buildings on the property. And the history of this property is, I believe it was one parcel at one time. At one point, it got divided into two. It got approval for two industrial buildings and associated grading and site preparation work. And there was some excavation involved that would support the building of the park, business park roads and other lots. But it was only the other lots of the business park, the roads, and this property. There was nothing beyond that. And it does have a plan that shows, like I said, the two buildings. And obviously, if you've been to the site, you can see that the excavation is deeper, much deeper, and much wider than ever contemplated to support those two buildings.
Thank you. Again, Jim Went, again, so that we do have, it's hard to read because it's an 11-by-8, 9-by-11 sheet, but I just want to clarify that that was the plan that was originally contemplated, the two industrial buildings with some associated parking dated, I think, '05. Just so for other members, that there was an approved plan to proceed with the site plan here, to build a building. And we have, the town's position is, as I understand it, is that the... Obviously, the buildings haven't been built, and the excavation that's happened to date far exceeds what was originally approved or contemplated. So that's kind of the backdrop, as I understand it. So Marion, I interrupted your questioning, so we will go back to you.
All right. I just don't understand how this ever got to the point that it is at now. I mean, it's so deep that you would say this should have been stopped a long time ago. No? Did you hear me?
Yeah, I certainly heard you, yes.
So how come it was not stopped before it got to this depth?
I'd have to defer that to someone other than my office.
I mean, I can provide a little background. I can't, I mean, I'm not enforcement branch of the town. But I can tell you that in 2015, there was an effort by the land use staff, which involved inland wetlands and planning and zoning, to address the construction and the excavation at that time. And a lot had occurred even at that time. And there is documentation in the different files of that correspondence with the previous owner about his permitting expiring and being beyond what it should be, and the need for coming in with new plans and new permits. And out of all the multiple actions that relate to that, they came in with only one, which relates to a re-subdivision of a portion of the property and the entrance at Cambridge Drive, which is related to the property but unrelated to the site work that's here. That work also has been re-approved with a change to it, and that has yet to get really underway as well. And that was approved back in 2016. So there were attempts by this land use staff to do various things. Why things didn't progress? Again, I would answer the same way, Joe. That's a question for some other people, then what's here?
I have another question.
Go ahead, Marion.
If the cease and desist is upheld, does that mean that that land's just going to remain like that? Or does the owner have to bring it back to some sort of a stable situation?
That is not addressed in the cease and desist. Essentially, the cease and desist is pretty clear as to what's being enforced at this time. It doesn't really address remediation.
If I may, Marion, this is for the record, I believe the applicant will probably shed some light on that in their presentation.
Okay, thank you.
You all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Ben, do you have any questions at this point before we move on?
No, I'm all set.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have any questions at this point before we continue?
No.
Thank you. Dom?
No questions.
Spencer?
No questions.
Joe, does that conclude your presentation at this point?
Yes. I really have nothing else to add at this point.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to the applicant. I see a couple of names here. I see Mr. Soli. I see Mr. Karp. I don't know who is going to be the spokesman, but you're both unmuted, so I will turn the the presentation over to either of you to make the applicant's case.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioner. We appreciate you taking the time. I have heard the introduction from Joe. Chapman, let me give you a little background. My name is Arnold Karp. I'm the managing member of the LLCs that own 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence. We acquired the property in May of 2019, a little bit over 15 months ago. So we've been in front of planning and zoning. We are currently in front of wetlands. And I'm happy to speak to you tonight about the problem that Mary just highlighted about, you know, why wasn't this stopped? And the rest of that. But really, what we're here to talk about is our plans to restore and remediate what has been done by prior ownership. We're looking for a global solution or resolution, some way to restore this, to get permission to fill in this hole. We're trying to move this project forward. We didn't buy this to be in the aggregate business or the crushing business. We bought this to turn this back into an industrial park. When we purchased it, we've sat down several times with different town officials, and I have explained that our intention is not to be, you know, crushing or in the quarry business. To those ends, the town asked, and of course, we complied with at our own voition, which was not to blast, to take the rest of the rock that was out of the hole out, clean up the site, and try to look for a solution that would work for us as the owner, the town as the town body and bodies, and make this back into a productive piece of property. You know, and I think this evening, between Kevin Soli, who is our engineer, and other people from my staff, I think we can give you a better handle of not only what is going on... and other people from my staff, I think we can give you a better handle of, uh, not only what is going on, uh, but what we're looking to do to rectify the situation. Uh, and understanding that, uh, a lot of this was about, was discussed, uh, back in the plans of 2004, uh, 2005 and the rest of it. So that wasn't during our ownership. Again, our ownership started in May of 2019. Uh, and I think we've been, uh, at this point, uh, transparent with the town on what we'd like to do and how we can make it better for the town and for us. But it, but again, it is not for us to be in the aggregate business. It is for us to restore and renovate this piece of property, to turn it back into a productive piece of property and, uh, actually, uh, turn it back into industrial. Um, so I'm going to hand it over to Kevin Soli, who is our engineer. Uh, and Kevin has been with the property far longer than I have. So, uh, I think Kevin can address many of the issues that, uh, come into play this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold. Um, for the record, Kevin Soli, uh, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering. Office is located at 501 Main Street here in Monroe. Um, would I be able to be made a presenter so I could put up a presentation for the, the board?
Yes, Kevin, hang on a second.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so, um, again, thank you, uh, members of the board. Um, so as, as Mr. Karp indicated, um, we, we assisted him. We've been working with, with him since he acquired the property in May of 2019. Um, and, uh, I wanted to kind of just give everybody a little bit more of a broad overview and some more of the details that everybody talked through and, and our response and our plan on how to move this thing forward. So, um, just to orient everyone, this site is located, uh, in the, kind of like the heart of the Pepper Street Business Park. Let me turn on my laser pointer here. So, um, towards the northern end of town, just south of the town line with Newtown. Um, this, this park here has been called the Pepper Street Business Park since about 2002, 2003. It's gone through several different approvals. Um, it's brought, uh, quite a few, um, uh, taxpaying properties, uh, that are serving the community. And, and this, these properties are 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence, which are really the heart of it, which were subject to a number of applications. So just a little bit closer, you can see, uh, Route 25 runs north-south. This is the north end of Pepper Street where it connects to, um, Route 25, um, Main Street. And this site is, if you were to turn onto Cambridge Drive, uh, you say to the right, you've got Mondial Automotive in this location, Axel Plastics here. Um, Caruba is about to open their new facility at 500 Pepper Street here. And these two properties are at 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence internal to the site. So, um, the site was, as we talked about, the site was approved and subject to several approvals over the years. In 2000, in March of 2006, it was approved to construct two large industrial buildings on the property. This approval did require the excavate, a considerable amount of excavation and removal of material from the site. Um, it included, sort of included extensive earthwork and clearing operations. It included the discharge into a municipal stormwater basin, um, in the northwest corner of the site. And it had extensive, uh, soil erosion sediment control measures. Um, and the site is actually currently in maintained coverage under two different general permits by the DEEP. Um, one for stormwater discharge for commercial activities and one for stormwater discharge for industrial activities. And those still permits are valid. Um, once we were engaged by Mr. Karp after he acquired the property, we, um, uh, re-initiated inspections and we're providing inspections of the property from a soil erosion sediment control standpoint in accordance with those permits and preparing and providing all, uh, required, um, testing and analysis in regards to that. So, um, as, as Arnold indicated, the site did change hands in June of 2019. And to offer a little bit more color with what, uh, Mr. Agresta stated before, yes, there was some discussion about the activities on this property in 2014. Um, part of that, there was somewhat of a multi-pronged approach to, to kind of address these properties. It started with a re-subdivision application for, um, uh, section five, which is how the, the permits were considered at the time, which modified the extent of Cambridge Drive. Previous approvals had it extending into the property. That re-subdivision approval pulled that cul-de-sac down. And that was kind of the first step in, um, uh, addressing, uh, some of the issues in the property. Uh, unfortunately, there were some global economic, uh, influences which took place, which prevented that property owner from completing that path at the time. Um, however, uh, the property's changed hands and, uh, Mr. Karp acquired the property in May of 2019. And, uh, pretty much almost immediately after acquiring the property, uh, he engaged us. And we came in and we met with staff, um, to talk about the site, to discuss the activities that took place, the limits of those activities that took place. And we talked about our desire to restore the site and to address all of those, um, issues that were caused by the previous, by a previous landowner. Um, during that meeting, it was established and acknowledged that there was an active permit on the site, which allowed for the continued operation. Um, and all of the activity that's kind of taken place on the site has been to that regard. There was, it, there was an approval to construct two large industrial buildings. Um, there was over excavation. In order to address that over excavation, we would need to bring in additional material to, to start to fill in that hole. And the activities that were taking place were in line with what that initial approval had. If it was, if it was deeper than, than what it was supposed to be, we'd have to bring that back up to try to get back to a, a place where the site could be developed again in the future. Um, so that was at a meeting in June of 2019. And actually, the, uh, uh, town, town attorney actually issued a letter to the client saying, you know, it was established, um, at a meeting in June of 2019 that this site did have a valid permit and that a permit would have expired, um, on March 21st in 2020. Um, as everyone's aware, just by the nature of this online, uh, Zoom meeting, we are in the midst of a global pandemic. As part of that global pandemic, um, the governor of the state of Connecticut issued several executive orders. And one of those executive orders actually extended and told land use and building permits so that any permit that was valid as of March 10th, 2020 is extended and told. So that expiration does not take place or that expiration cannot be enforced or acted upon, which essentially, um, allowed, uh, gives us the opinion that our permit that was issued in March of 2006 is still valid because it was established at an initial meeting with staff. That permit was good. Our operations were in accordance with that permit and that permit was going to expire in March. Governor Lamont then extended that approval, um, and, and that's what the activities on the site have been. And again, all of the activities that have been conducted on the property since our client acquired the property have not exacerbated the issues that were done by previous owners, but have been done trying to address and move this project forward and this site forward so that we could get it to be a productive piece of property again. And to, to that end, um, after that initial meeting, we actually had several meetings with staff. We went and talked to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had several meetings with the Planning and Zo, Planning and Zoning Regulation Subcommittee to talk about how to address this site-specific and, um, uh, unique characteristics on how it could become a productive member of the community again, from a commercial, from a, uh, from an activity and operation standpoint. Um, we continued those discussions for several months. And then suddenly, without really any, um, explanation to us or, or, or our client, the town of Monroe kind of ceased those discussions. And the subcommittee basically said, well, we're not really interested in pursuing that until we figure out what else is going to go on with, with the property. And at that time, the Wetlands Commission also issued a wetland violation. This was November of, of last year. We were immediately responsive to that. We attended a meeting with the Wetlands Commission. We prepared a comprehensive assessment of the site to really kind of verify and quantify the extent and limits of the activity that's been on the site. And we pledged to them that we would be, we would submit a plan to address that violation and to restore the site. That application was made. We are currently in the midst of a public hearing process with the Wetlands Commission. That submission was also, or that same application for site, uh, restoration, um, was also, uh, submitted to the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, um, in the attempt to try to address this on a global issue. And we actually have a public hearing, um, which will open with planning and zoning on Thursday of this week in just two short days. So we have been actively working on trying to address this issue and trying to get this property to be back and restored the best way possible. Because we believe that's the best solution for, for, for our client, who now owns the property. And it's really the best solution for the town of Monroe. Um, um, one of the things that I wanted to, to ask this board to consider, um, there's a lot of misinformation out there. There are, um, there, uh, there's a budding property owner who is, um, uh, overly distressed regarding the activities on the property, um, which we believe stems from a lot of this, uh, the lack of further discussion and some of the resistance we've had. Um, though that property owner has called the DEEP, uh, Division of Solid Waste, Division of Air, um, Division of Water Quality. Um, they've made several complaints to the Aquarian Water Company. All of those agencies have come out to the site. They've conducted inspections and they've determined that there's no, um, uh, nothing required, um, uh, action or there was no actionable items that were required as part of those inspections. Um, we've also had, uh, um, the Wetlands Commission, uh, recently conducted this past Saturday, a special meeting and conducted a site walk, which was open to the public. It was essentially a public meeting with the Wetlands Commission. Um, we had one scheduled for last Saturday and we have another inspection scheduled, site walk, and scheduled for next Tuesday, September 8th. We would actually like to invite this board to, um, uh, schedule a special meeting and we invite this board to come out to the site on that same day and time, 4:30 on Tuesday, September 8th, to visit the property, to understand, um, what the condition is and to, and we're happy to even further present, um, more of our plans to restore the site that's currently pending before Wetlands and Planning and Zoning. We're going to make that same, um, request to the Planning and Zoning Commission because we believe they would also benefit from seeing the property and have a better understanding of what's out there and how our plan is really going to address, immediately address and, and provide a path for this site to be restored. So it can be, um, uh, so it can be, uh, so it can be put back into a productive, uh, as a productive piece of property in the town of Monroe. Um, as part of our, uh, uh, application to this board, we provided, um, a memorandum why we felt that the cease and desist, uh, wasn't, um, appropriate. Um, the, the first bullet was more of a blanket statement that we were in violation of several, uh, parts of the zoning regulations. We believe that kind of lacked any specificity. It's very difficult for us to defend, um, what we think, what, what's being alleged of us if we don't know what particularly is being, um, uh, said of us. The, uh, the, um, bullet about operating without a valid permit and excessive authorized land use activities, um, you know, we believe our permit is valid through the tolling issued by Governor Lamont. We think we do still have a valid permit. Um, and any of the activities that are conducting on the site since ownership, since this transition of ownership have not exacerbated any of those conditions which were done by previous owners. Um, they've been simply trying to get the property back to, you know, closer in line of what was previously approved and really prepare it and continue to prepare it for the remediate, the restoration activities, which is currently pending before the various land use agencies. Um, uh, the, the other bullet was non-permitted use of premises as a commercial quarry, um, including unauthorized import and export of earth and building materials and processing of such materials. Um, the activity on the property is not a commercial quarry. Uh, based on the definition of the zoning regs, we are not doing that. Activity that took place prior to the transition of ownership, um, uh, was being done under a permit, which, um, uh, allowed for that activity to take place. Um, and, you know, frankly, as in any commercial construction activity within the town of Monroe on every other property, um, there, you know, we believe that, that the operation had been consistent with what would take place on a lot of other, uh, construction sites. And, and again, the activity since the new ownership has, has all been, um, you know, trying to get the property back to where it needs to be. Um, non-permitted import and onsite deposit of fill materials of unknown content and origin. I can assure you, the property owner is aware of the, uh, content and origin of every truckload of material that has come to this property. As part of our submission to the Wetlands Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission, we included a, um, uh, material acceptance protocol, which essentially establishes, establishes a procedure on every truck of material that comes in. There is an inspection that needs to take place, um, both visual and, uh, through, uh, a PID. There is an analysis of that material. It has to meet the definition of clean fill as provided by the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection. And if the material, uh, and, and the operator or the person bringing the material to the site actually has to provide a certification that the site meets that definition. And for any, um, uh, larger fill activities, it, or, or any, uh, there has to be additional manifests and, um, environmental testing data which documents and establishes that this material is clean fill in accordance with DEEP requirements. Um, so that, so the assertion or the allegation that it's coming of unknown, um, origin or content, the property owner does have that information. And we'd even be happy to provide that additional information to this board, um, if they think that would, if it would help, uh, make, uh, your decision-making process. Um, and we've offered to make those same things to, uh, Wetlands and Planning and Zoning as well. Um, uh, the next bullet was non-permitted site activity and disturbance exceeding maximum permitted active work area allowed and overall site disturbance vertically and horizontally, vertically and horizontally. Again, any of the activity which exceeded those requirements happened well in advance of the property changing hands. And the current property owner has not exacerbated any of those limits that was reviewed and discussed with town staff, with town council at that meeting in June and at subsequent meetings with staff. Um, so we do not believe that bullet really applies to, uh, our client or the current operations on the site. Um, uh, the next bullet was non-permitted discharge into Pepper Street, Section 2 Stormwater Management Basin. Again, the initial approval issued for this property did have a, uh, a, uh, stormwater discharge into that basin. And additionally, our permit with the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection for stormwater discharge for construction activities also gives us the right to de-water the site. Um, so we don't believe that bullet was, um, uh, was, was valid. And then the last one was lack of erosion and sedimentation controls. And, and as I, as I stated previously, um, our office, uh, does provide, um, uh, periodic and routine soil erosion sedimentation and sedimentation control inspections of the property. We do it after every rainfall event which exceeds, uh, 0.5 inches. And we also provide monthly turbidity tests and semi-annual chemical analysis and quarterly visual, visual inspections, um, as part of, uh, those permits. So it, the site does have sedimentation controls. Um, so we do not, uh, you know, so we did not agree with that bullet either. Um, we're, our ultimate goal, um, is to restore this site. We have tried to do everything we can to, um, proactively and cooperatively work with staff. We filed applications with Wetlands. We filed applications with Planning and Zoning. Um, the Wetlands application received a third-party peer review by the Southwest Conservation District. They actually agreed with our ultimate goal of filling this property and restoring the watershed to, uh, one of the surrounding natural resources in the northeast corner. Because part of this activity significantly reduced the watershed, which, uh, provided, uh, stormwater runoff or, uh, yeah, stormwater runoff to this wetland. Our application proposes to restore that, to, to fix and address, um, and to remedy the indirect wetland impact which is taking place on this property through the prior, prior ownership. And, and we believe that our plan really is in line with everyone's best interests because we all want to get this property back to where it should be so it can be a positive and productive, um, uh, industrial property in the town of Monroe. Um, you know, you know, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the board has. And then again, we would encourage the board to, to, um, leave the hearing open and to schedule a special meeting to come out and walk the property, uh, next Tuesday, September 8th at 4:30. We have an open hearing with Wetlands and we're going to encourage Planning and Zoning to do the same. We have been, we've tried to be as transparent as possible through this process. We've tried to maintain active dialogues with the various land use commissions and the town staff. Um, and we- And we have, you know, nothing to hide. There's been all kinds of allegations made, which we believe have been proven unfounded again and again. And we really believe that what we're trying to do is in the best interest of everyone, both the applicant and the town of Monroe, and the broader community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and appreciate the board's consideration.
Thank you. Jim Went again, for the record. Maybe we can get back to the screen where we can see each other a little bit in larger detail. If we can stop sharing the screen, that would be great. Before I do all on some questions, I have a couple. I just, or a statement, I guess, first. I'm, I think, I just want to make it clear here that this board's role is very limited with respect to this application. I respect the fact that the applicant is actively seeking to resolve this matter with actions before the Wetlands Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. But we are very narrowly focused here on whether or not the existing conditions are considered a zoning violation or not. There's been an order or a cease and desist order issued. And so, our review is solely with respect to whether or not we agree that there's a violation here. I think we all share your interest in resolving this and moving this property forward. But it's not this board's role to make that determination on what the ultimate resolution of the property will ultimately be. That's going to be the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Inland Wetlands Commission. So we are very, very narrowly focused here on whether or not the conditions of the site and the activity therein constitute a zoning violation or they do not. That's, I just want to make sure that we're keeping our eye on the ball here in that very simple question, maybe not so simple. But, and I do appreciate the applicant's desire to move this forward, and I understand they have hearings upcoming. But we're only passing judgment on whether we agree or disagree with your argument that the cease and desist order that was issued was either issued properly or it wasn't. So that's, that's really, I wanted to make sure we're staying in our lane here. It's not our role to determine what the ultimate disposition of this property will be. It's whether or not the current condition is a zoning violation. And with that, I just, I just want to go back. And it sounded like, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Soli or Mr. Karp, but it sounded to me that there was agreement that the condition of the site, whether it was of your doing or not, far exceeds the scope of work that was permitted under the original special exception. Is that a fair statement or an unfair statement?
I believe that's, I believe that's a fair statement.
Okay.
Yes, prior, Jim, certainly prior to our ownership, they're, you know, well documented, you know, on the excavation front and how the property was used. Since our ownership, I would probably differ a little bit.
Okay, so do you have an opinion as to whether the condition of the site as it stands today is in compliance with that permit?
I'd say the activities on the property have been trying to restore the intent of that permit.
I fully understand that, but that would say to me, to have to restore the property to the intent of the permit would presuppose the fact that it doesn't comply at the present.
Well, I think, I think I would argue that any construction site is not going to look exactly at the finished product during construction.
I would agree with that too. But let me, let me ask you this. Do you know what the, what the existing grades are of the site where the proposed buildings were proposed to be located?
We do. Yes, we do.
And do you, and what is that? Do you know?
The, what is the existing elevation?
Yes.
435 in the front and deeper towards the back. 380 or so, 390?
Okay. Because my reading of the approved site plan had those slab elevations at 455. So that would confirm that the condition of the property is, far exceeds the excavation that was approved. Now, I understand that it's your position that that wasn't your doing. And I'm not looking to make that determination. It does, it's not particularly relevant, in my view. I think the only issue here is whether or not the existing condition of the site constitutes a violation or not. And there may be a path forward for you with those other boards that you have a remediation plan to make this work. But as I stated before, I think our role here is only just to agree or disagree whether or not the existing condition constitutes a violation. I may not-
Chairman Went, Chairman Went? Can I just make a point, though? The, we are also involved in many other projects in town. The existing condition of the Noble Gas, which is under construction on Route 111, does not match the proposed grade. I don't think that creates a zoning violation for that project as it's currently under construction.
Well, have they overexcavated it by over 40 feet?
Well, Commissioner Went, the other thing is, as I look at the old permits, there was no vertical limit in that permit. Again, done prior to our ownership. So if I'm not allowed to remediate, shouldn't this be an issue that would have occurred prior to our ownership? Not at this point in our ownership. This is, this didn't, this didn't happen since May of 19. This was all done prior to that period. So I understand that it may not be in line with the permit. But if I'm not allowed to fill, and we're in for those permits, how can I be responsible for the hole that was there when we purchased it?
Well, my response to that would be, I don't disagree with the timing. That's not particularly important, like I said, in my view. I think a plan to remediate the site needs to happen. I would agree, and I think we would all agree there. But I don't think we should be proceeding further until that plan is in place. But again, that's not for us to say. We are not the remediation board here. We're just determining whether or not the cease and desist order that was issued on June 24th is valid or not. You're asserting that it's not. The town is asserting that it is. And again, I don't think it's our role to resolve how this site gets remediated. We just need to pass judgment on whether or not we agree the cease and desist order was properly issued. That's it. Where things go from here, you have active permits pending to hopefully resolve that. And I, and I hope that's well and good. And maybe, and maybe we should, at the conclusion of these proceedings, perhaps not vote this evening, but get everybody's input and see how things proceed. But again, I'm not looking to cast blame onto who might be responsible for the conditions of the site. But it seems to be there's common agreement that the site as it exists today far exceeds the scope of work that was initially permitted, which in my view would support the issuance of the cease and desist order. The effect of that, you know, it remains to be seen. If you're successful in pursuing your remediation plan, the effect of this cease and desist order will be very short-lived and there will be a plan forward to remediate the site. I think that would be, I think the town's hope, and your hope as well. So that's really where I wanted to go with that. Is if you're successful in these applications that you have pending, it should resolve this matter.
But it all do deference. Since I have owned this since May of last year, this is only coming about now 15 months later. In my various meetings with the town, the selectmen, P and Z, Wetlands, why wasn't this noted in month one or two of my ownership? Not in month 14 or 15?
Oh, I appreciate your position on that, but that's not a question for us to answer. We, you know, we, the cease and desist order was made and appeal was taken. We're sitting in judgment of that. Not on what happened before that. And I appreciate your frustration in how the timing may have rolled out. But we find ourselves where we are, and we don't have the ability to change those circumstances. We just need to resolve whether or not we agree with the findings of Mr. Chapman, or we don't. And then, everything will flow from that with your other applications. That is my two cents. And I will go through the role to see if other members. I've been hogging the floor here, but to see if any other members have any questions before we proceed. Marion, do you have any questions before we proceed?
Well, my understanding is that you are not bringing, you're not taking any material out of this property. You are just bringing material in at this point?
Yes. Current operations, yes. There was some, there were some, there was some product on the site that isn't really suitable for use as fill. Some of that has been removed from the property. Some asphalt milling that could be used as a road-based material. But current operations are to bring in material.
Well, that, the bad material, if I call it that, that Mr., that the zoning enforcement officer referred to, you are not bringing that in, according to you. That was already there? And you are taking it out?
There's been some-
Is that what you're saying?
There's been, there's been some material which has come onto the site, which can be processed and meet the definition of clean fill. So I think Mr. Chapman mentioned rebar and things like that. That is, that could come in in demolition debris, which is a clean fill in accordance with DEEP. But that rebar needs to get sorted out and removed prior to any of that material being used as fill.
Okay. I have another question related to the governor's proclamation there. You state that his proclamation gives you the right to continue your operation. And I would like to hear from our staff on their reading of the governor's proclamation as to whether that really applies to you or not.
I think I would defer that to Barbara Schellenberg.
I would agree.
Yeah, thank you. So it is correct that that executive order does extend the time for a permit, but it does not apply if there's a violation. So the town's position is that there was a violation that existed before that executive order went into place and after. So that's the caveat here.
Thank you.
You have any other questions, Marion?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Ben, do you have any questions at this point?
No questions.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have any questions at this point? All right, thank you. So you're shaking your head no. Dom, do you have any questions at this point?
No questions.
Thank you. Spencer, do you have any questions at this point?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Karp or Mr. Soli, are you, you'll have an opportunity to have the last word here. There may be other folks that want to participate. Are you done with your presentation before we move on to any public comment? You will have the opportunity for rebuttal upon the conclusion of all the public comment.
That's fine.
Okay. So we're going to, if folks are looking to participate, I know we weren't going to use the chat feature, but it may be helpful to just type your name into the chat so at least we have a queue of folks that wish to be heard. We will proceed through everybody that wants to be heard and then circle back to the applicant thereafter. So I see Attorney Green, his camera is on. Mr. Green, are you, would you be heard on this matter?
I would, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You may.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Gross. It's my pleasure to appear this evening on behalf of Peter Metropolis, who is the owner of a budding property at 36 Timothy Hill Road. And the property directly abuts, and it's a sizable piece of property. My client has significant concerns about the activities on this site. And they really arise from his concern about the impact of the activities on water quality and air quality in the site, in the, in the area, and in the region, frankly. And I just want to offer these remarks. First of all, I know that the chair has already made reference to the fact that this really is a sort of a unique proceeding in that you're sitting this evening to review the action by Mr. Chapman on June 24th in issuing the order, the cease and desist order. And really, I put it in that context because while I appreciate the appellant's offer to visit the site, I can tell you that the site is not in the condition that it was on June 24th. I was able to attend the site visit on Saturday. And apparent to me, and I am not an engineer, that there's been a considerable amount of activity on the site recently. I note that the aerial photograph that Mr. Soli displayed during his presentation did not really depict the current condition of the premises. And I note that the, that there's standing water on that is no longer in the location. It's apparent that there's been a considerable amount of material moved on the site. And I can tell you that, I mean, to see the site is eye-opening and dramatic, but I would say that it's not directly germane to your duty tonight in acting on this petition. Now, the next comment I want to make is it really doesn't matter whether the applicant had bought the property a day before, a week before, a month before, a year before, or a decade before June 24th. The point is that Mr. Chapman assessed and, by his testimony, had been to the site many times, and he issued his order based on the condition of the site as he saw it. Just, it's just a dramatic, dramatic site. I can tell you, my client reports that there's been a considerable amount of activity since the cease and desist. There have been trucks loaded coming into the site. There have been loaded trucks leaving the site. And, you know, the, there's been just a considerable amount of activity. But based on my observations alone, and once again, I am not an engineer, the work that has been done on that site dramatically exceeds the permit that was issued by this commission. I mean, and it is, I would say that the work is beyond anything contemplated as being incidental to construction. And I note the applicant, the applicant sort of parsed their words when you asked if the work exceeded the permit. And it's dramatically exceeded the permit. And when the applicant suggests that there are other projects in town where perhaps during construction there's disturbance that exceeds what is permitted. That's really, first of all, that's not relevant. But I would tell you that this far, I mean, just dramatically exceeds anything that was permitted. And the nature of the work that was done, this is not sort of incidental. This is heavy, heavy work involving massive quantities of materials. And these acts don't occur sort of what I will call as incidental or accessory to the activities that were permitted. So even beyond the permit, even beyond the permit. So I guess the first issue is the applicant is claiming that the governor's orders stay the expiration of the permit. But I think the point is, first of all, that the work exceeds the permit. And the next point that I would make is you have conditions for excavation, fill- filling and grading operations that were referenced by Mr. Chapman in his letter. And he refers specifically, for example, and I'm just offering this as an example, to Article 6.4. And I note in reviewing the regulations, and I would also concede that these, I believe that these regulations are relatively recent, but I would suggest that they are still applicable to this project because the activity has been ongoing. And there are a number of conditions on the site that I think it's fair to say, I think it's very fair to say existed on June 24th on the date of the violation. And I can tell you that from my site observation, and again, untrained, that many of these activities have just continued. And for example, it's clear that there are slopes, referring to 6.4.9B. There are slopes that are dramatically in excess of 27 degrees on the site. D of 6.4.9 refers to artificial slopes greater than 14 degrees within 50 feet of any property line. And while I didn't measure it, I note that on the Independence Drive end of the site and also at the opposite end of the site closer to the entrance, it appears that through moving material, there have been slopes created. And as I understood it, the property lines are located very close to these slopes. And I would say within 50 feet. Let's see. Proper drainage was to be provided to prevent collection stagnation or excessive runoff of water or to prevent harmful effects upon surrounding properties. The activities have continued. My client is concerned. There has been fill, as Mr. Chapman notes, that fill that's been brought into the site. We believe that much of that fill has been, already been deposited and buried since June 24th. And my client has very pointed concerns, again, regarding the water quality in the area and the impact of the activities that are being conducted, been conducted on the site on groundwater. 6.4. G refers to artificial ponds or lakes. There are artificial ponds and lakes created on the site. And, you know, I'm not sure how to address the water volume issue or the surface elevation movement and temperature and to avoid stagnation. But there were areas of standing water on the site and we are aware. I should also note that we're aware from previous photographs of ponds that have been filled on the site in our estimation. Let's see. Proper barricades or fences erected for the protection of pedestrians and vehicles. Anyone who's been on that site can see that there are dangerous conditions existing on this site and dangerous in terms of, there's a gigantic pile of stone, of stone dust, basically, findings from the stone excavation process, process. And I, Mr. Chapman can tell you about that, but it is a massive, massive pile. And I note that it is being, it appeared that it was being actively worked because it appears that there were areas where material had been removed from this huge pile. And yet I note that there's nothing to protect pedestrians near the area. If there were a slide of that material, there is a hugely deep quarry that has no fencing around it. And in fact, during the site visit, the applicant and the staff there and Mr. Soli were constantly reminding the concert, the inland wetlands commission to please back up from the edge because they believe that the ground was unstable around many of the features on the site. So that comes into J. Noise, flying dust or rock. My client is aware that during site work, it's dust. And I understand that Mr. Soli does report on that. And yet, abutting owners of the property have made complaints about dust arising from the operation. So I guess the point is, and I think that the board has some great questions. And the point is, this violation should be processed by the zoning commission in a deliberate and orderly way. And while I understand that the applicant, and I am a, my client is an intervenor in both the zoning proceeding and in the conservation proceeding as a concerned party with the air, water and natural resources. And putting aside the good intentions that may exist of the applicant that they express, I think this has to be done in an orderly and measured way following process. And really, we've got to stop and say, wait a second. And I suppose, I mean, you can see from the aerial how dramatic this is, and it is unique and it is staggering. And I think this is a moment for this commission to say, for this board to uphold the cease and desist so that we can bring some order to this, to this proceeding. And once again, and I just want to, just let me check my notes for just one moment. It's our understanding that there, there are not adequate permits on the site for fill and not adequate procedures for the intake of debris. I note that the applicant keeps referring to a robust process for reviewing material. I will tell you that an independent consultant, the inland wetlands commission, suggested that the monitoring and sampling of materials coming into the site is not adequate and should be done with greater frequency. I will tell you that a consultant that my client has retained, Alta Environmental, has similarly indicated that the sampling procedure should be more robust. We look forward to reviewing the materials that the applicant keeps referring to that shows the records of their, of their monitoring of the material that comes in the site. We have not seen that yet. But where I was going with this is this is an excellent opportunity to bring some order to this proceeding. And the applicant will have a fair opportunity to address what their plan is and how to address this exceedance type permit, how to address these good requirements that are in your zoning regulations. And I think that in fairness, this, in response to Mr. Karp's comment as to why this is happening now, I think it's because, and not 15 months ago, I would offer the following comments. First of all, I think that Mr. Karp is a savvy investor and a savvy commercial property owner. I'm sure that he assessed the condition of the property. He saw this as a business opportunity. I'm sure that he assessed the, the, the work that lay ahead in addressing this and negotiating for the purchase of this property. Anyone who saw this property would be aware that there's something that needs to be responded to. So presumably that factored into the negotiations. As I understand it, the discussions have been ongoing for some time with the director of zoning, with Mr. Chapman. This is not something that just dropped out of the sky on June 24th. But I think I've said enough. But once again, I urge the commission to uphold Mr. Chapman's cease and desist order. I think it's a good one. I think it brings order to this process. If the applicant is on top of this, as, as on top of it as they say, it should be a relatively easy procedure for them to satisfy. The zoning commission is very reasonable in dealing with these violations. And on that basis, I hope that you'll uphold the action by Mr. Chapman. I, once again, I don't think that a, I mean, while a site visit would be interesting, and I'm sure that the applicant will welcome you if you want to go on the 8th, I don't think that it is fair and accurate to rely on that site visit to assess what was happening on June 24th. And my client and I urge this commission to uphold the action by Mr. Chapman and to deny this appeal. I don't know if you have any questions for me, having been to the site recently.
I don't believe we do at this point, but thank you, Mr. Green. I don't see anybody else in the chat. If anybody has their camera on that wishes to be heard, you could just simply raise your hand or send a note in the chat if you want to participate. Or otherwise unmute yourself and let us know you wish to be heard. I see.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Pat Sullivan from Cohen Wolf, and I represent the applicant. And I would like to speak, but I'm happy to speak in the rebuttal or now, whichever is your preference.
I think we'll wait until, to see if there's any other public that wishes to speak, and then you'll absolutely have an opportunity in rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? Going once, going twice. I do not see anybody else either in the chat or on the screen. So Ms. Sullivan, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. First of all, as I'm sure you're aware, in reviewing an appeal from the, the decision of a zoning enforcement officer to issue a enforcement letter or a cease and desist officer, a cease and desist order, the Z B A does a de novo review. So you find your own facts. You don't look to the facts that Mr. Chapman had. You find your own facts. So I would like to see, now listen to Mr. Green, but I think it's sort of a rush to say, well, I think you should just go ahead and uphold his cease and desist order, when the applicant has basically said to you, why don't you come out to the site and take a look? You've heard a lot of testimony from Mr. Green about his visit and how fascinated and curious and, and interesting it was. So it sounds to me like the Z B A would benefit from, from a visit to the property. It's already scheduled. So I think that would be, that would be very helpful. One of the things that you have to also look at is selective enforcement. So there's been a lot of pressure from Mr. Green and his client to, to address these issues. The timing of it, the fact that they're now looking to have it upheld by this board rather than to let the process play out. Can't both have the process play out and have the board not go look for its own facts? So I would encourage the board to go to the property. Also, the cease and desist order was issued to Mr. Karp. And I think what we've heard tonight is that there's nothing that Mr. Karp did on this property to cause this. I'm, I'm looking to avoid any future litigation because that's my job. So I would like to make sure that this is all buttoned up and that we're not looking at years and years of litigation. My understanding is that the, the neighboring property owner was also interested in the property. So I don't appreciate Mr. Green talking about whatever the, the financial interest is of Mr. Karp and how he negotiated to purchase the property, but that is not before this board. And it's not appropriate for Mr. Green to bring that into this discussion about whether or not there is, that the, that a cease and desist order should have issued. I think Mr. Soli did a comprehensive response. I don't disagree with, with Attorney Schellenberg that the executive order does not necessarily extend to violations, but there's an existing permit on this property that clearly was still in, in force in mid-March when the governor issued his extensions. My expectation is that extension, that those extensions are going to be further extended. So as Mr. Karp said, we're looking for a global solution here. We have, we're pulling all the parties to the table and we would like this to be an orderly process. We'd like to get all the parties together. We'd like to have a global solution, and I think we can do that. We're not looking to, to do any harm to the air or the water. We're looking to be a taxpayer moving forward in the town of Monroe. So we're happy to answer any, you know, any additional questions. I don't know whether Mr. Karp or Mr. Soli has anything in addition to say, but, but those are my thoughts.
Okay. Mr. Karp, do you have anything on rebuttal?
Well, there's also a series of permits that are still open, including the permit to extend the road into the cul-de-sac. That is a current permit. You know, all of the abutting neighbors' concern about water and air and, you know, the natural resources is very interesting because I believe that Mr. Chapman, and as we speak to the conditions, Mr. Chapman started tours of this property in November of 2019. So only after the abutting neighbor called into question and into town hall was this issued. So November was okay, December was okay, January was okay, February was okay, March was okay, April. Okay? So I, I'm not quite sure, when I go through Mr. Chapman's points, which Kevin had reviewed, you know, Kevin's team is out there after every rain. You know, there does not need to be silk fence around my stone dust. This is a private site, so it's not like people are walking on when Mr. Green talks about safety. You know, no one is allowed past the office without signing in, as Mr. Chapman mentioned. So this is not an unsafe condition, something that needs to be rectified today or this week or tomorrow, but as quickly as possible. And third-party inspections, it's interesting that that came up with Mr. Green. The point about any material that has been brought in, we have a manifest from where it comes from. So while Mr. Green refers to the southern, southwestern districts need for more testing, what they don't understand is we've already received a report that says the material is clean and okay to import and eventually will be okay to be put into the hole. But it's not that it's not being tested, it's not that there isn't a manifest. So I think we have to look at the issues that Mr. Chapman saw, the issues that he'd seen prior, and all of a sudden, there's a cease and desist. As we're into wetlands and as we're into P and Z, I'm not sure what a cease and desist at this point would do, except further delay it. And that's exactly what my neighbor would like, who had, you know, while they talk about my economic interest, yes, I have a very substantial investment in this property that exceeds today over $3.5 million. Yes, I have been with the town since the month I bought this, saying, how do we proceed? How would you like us to go forward? And we've been thwarted at almost every turn. So I believe that with Kevin's oversight, the town's oversight, we, the issuing of a cease and desist and the things that were pointed out are inconsistent and certainly not timely.
I have a follow-up question, if I may. Has, has any of this manifest information been shared with the town?
No, but it will be with wetlands. They asked for it in the last meeting and it is being produced for their next, next meeting.
Okay. Why, I mean, it, in response to that, in response to the June 24th, when it was a bullet in the, in the June 24th cease and desist, rather than appealing that issue, I mean, would it, could, could it have been shared sooner so that perhaps wasn't something that we're asked to pass judgment on at this point?
The short answer is, we're being held to a standard that no other place in New, in Monroe is being held to. You know, it's several pages of documents, some which have to be redacted. We have said in numerous public hearings and meetings prior to this that we're happy to make it available. There's stuff that needs to be redacted as who the clients are, but we're happy to make that available. We have talked to. but we're happy to make that available. We have talked to, this was part of our early meeting with P and Z and the town, that we would provide it, and quite honestly, no one has asked for it in a written format. They've said, geez, you should get it to us, but nobody has asked for it. And, and we do have it. Okay, I am onsite a minimum of twice a week. We review all, anything that comes in. So in all deference, I'm being held to a standard that not even the town could meet with their resources, certainly not any other homeowner, nor any other building site in the town. But we are happy to provide it if we are asked.
Well, this is Jim Went again. It seems to me that you were. I don't mean to be argumentative, and I'll just leave it there, but, but when, when in writing on June 24th, it says, fill of unknown content and origin, if you can respond to that with a manifest, it would seem like that was a written request to do so. But neither here nor there. It's not, not critical.
Chairman, Chairman Went, Chairman Went, to your point, though, that was the first time it was received by us in writing to provide that information, we didn't have a mechanism to just simply give that to the town. Our only mechanism response to the cease and desist was to file this application, was to come before this board for their consideration. And we're happy to provide all of those documents to this board for their consideration. But we're talking about filing cabinets filled with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages and sheets of paper with certifications, and additional manifests and things like that. We're talking, you know, bounds and bounds of documents.
I'm, before we close, again, I want to circle back to what I said before about trying to keep this simple. Our focus is very limited here, in whether or not each and every one of these bullet points may be explainable or not. It seems to me, in from prior questioning in your responses, that there's common agreement that the, the site activity and disturbance exceeded the maximum permitted active work. And I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, when I asked that question before, you both seemed to agree that that is true. In that alone, that fact alone is enough for me to suggest that this cease and desist order ought to be upheld, even if we disregard all of the other bullet points on this list, and I'm not suggesting we are, but just that one fact alone, that there seems to be common agreement with, that the site activity far exceeded the maximum permitted work, it seems to me that that's, you know, that, that's a fact that supports the cease and desist order. Now, and I, and I fully respect, and it's my sincere hope, regardless of what we do, that you are successful in your pursuit of your applications to resolve this matter to the commissions, the Planning and Zoning Commission satisfaction and the Inland Wetlands Commission satisfaction. But being that our focus here tonight is very limited, and whether or not this cease and desist order ought to be upheld, before we close, is, again, there seemed to be before and prior questioning, no dispute that the, whether it was of your doing or not, in the timing of it is not particularly relevant, in my view. But the fact that there doesn't seem to be any dispute about whether or not that work has exceeded the permitted scope. Now, you're, you've stated you're actively working to correct that. But as I see it, I believe that to be a violation. I don't believe we need to hold this hearing open and visit the site. I believe we are able to find facts on our own, as was suggested, but these facts are not in dispute. So before we close, I mean, is, am I incorrect that that fact is not disputed?
Since none of my team will speak up, I guess my comment would be, since the purchase of this, it was only upon Mr. Chapman's visit in June that this became an issue. So would we call this enforcement even fair, reasonable, when all we have been doing is trying to make the situation better? You've heard from Attorney Green, the piles have been moved. There's no Ford, nothing that says it, they can't be. We believe our permits are in effect, especially the one for the road construction. Okay. But it is interesting that the, nothing has changed in this piece of property since my purchase, but you'll go back to prior ownership to issue this cease and desist at this point in time. So I just would like to understand what the 17 months in my discussions with the town, who was very aware of this, as you've heard, in 2004, 2007, 2014, no cease and desist, but now you'll stop so that my neighbor and the town can say, well, since there's a cease and desist, we will slow down any other approvals. I'm not sure if that helps, or certainly hurts not only the applicant, but the town, since we're trying to make this situation better for both parties.
Okay. I, I, I don't have anything else. Any member of the board have any other questions before we close the hearing? I don't, I, I am not, I don't believe it's going to help the interest of the town or the applicant to continue this matter. I think we have enough information available to us. I don't know how we're slowing things down. You have a public hearing two nights from now, as I understand it, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, to hopefully progress in your endeavor to, to rectify this matter. So if you're successful, any ruling that we make tonight, one way or the other, will be hopefully short-lived. That is my sincere hope. Does anybody have anything further before we close this hearing this evening? Any members of the commission, you just put your hand up, and I will call the roll, just, just to stick with the script that was read before. Marion, do you have anything further at this point?
No, I agree with you that if we act to die, and they're going to be P and Z in two days from now, it'll just start all over again, and it really doesn't make any difference what we do.
Ben, do you have any comments before we close the hearing?
No comments.
Sarah?
No comments.
Dom?
No comment.
Spencer?
No comment.
Okay. I probably should note for the record, there, now that there's, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, now that there's six of us here, that all the regular members are sitting, and Dom would be sitting for the vacant regular seat. So I just wanted to make that clear before we go. With that, I thank everybody for their participation this evening, and we're going to close the public hearing on this matter. Going back, no, our agenda has pending minutes. With my apologies, I don't have those before me this evening, so I would request someone make a motion to table the minutes that are listed on the agenda.
I shall move. I shall move.
Marion made a motion to table the minutes. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Sarah is seconding that motion. I will do a roll call vote to table. Say yes or no for the motion to table. Marion?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sarah? Dom?
Yes.
And I, Jim Went, also say yes, so that the minutes are tabled, five to zero. We did have the application on Crescent Place that we heard, file number 1403. Before we make a discussion, does anybody have a motion on this matter?
I hope that we approve this application.
Motion to approve by Marion. Is there a second to that motion? Sarah, second. Marion, do you have any, do you have any discussion before we vote? Marion, can you hear me? If you can hear me, we seem to have lost your audio. Marion, can you hear me?
My phone is fine here.
Yes, all right. Do you have any comment on your motion to approve this matter?
Oh, for me, yes. The, the, the shape of the land, the pre-existing fact that it was prior to zoning, makes it a hardship in and of itself. There seems to be nothing but an improvement done to this property, and it will be an improvement in the area, I believe. So I, I motion that we approve it.
Okay. Sarah, is the seconder of this matter, do you have any further comment?
No, I do not.
Ben, do you have any comments?
I missed that part of the presentation.
Okay.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Spencer, you were here for that application, were you not?
Yes, I was.
You got a seat for that?
What's that? Yeah, so Spencer will, will sit for, for Ben. Do you have any comments on the motion before we vote?
Nope.
Dom?
No comment.
Okay. Jim Went, for the record, I agree with the motion. I think the fact that the House far exceeds the, the date of the regulations, and the fact that it is a very constrained, uniquely situated site constitutes hardship. So I would agree with Marion on that. So with that, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Again, the motion is to approve this variance. Marion?
Yes.
Yes. Sarah?
Yes.
Dom? Spencer?
Yes.
And Jim Went, I also vote yes. So this matter is approved, five to zero. We go back to the matter we just heard on the cease and desist order. And again, this is whether or not we agree the cease and desist order was properly issued, regardless of all the other issues at play here. And before we discuss further, does anybody wish to make a motion on this?
Before you do that, you're going to reseed Ben, correct, in place of Spencer?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Ben, you're back seated on this matter. So does anybody wish to make a motion before we discuss this further?
It's up to me to make a motion again. Okay. I, I move that we uphold the zoning enforcement position on this matter.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? No? I don't speak at once? There was, there was a motion to uphold the cease and desist order made by Marion. Is there anybody that wishes the second there?
Who is that?
That's just feedback from Marion's phone, I believe. Okay, I do not see a second to that motion. Does anybody wish to make a different motion? We need to make a decision in some fashion. Before we can discuss it, we have to have a motion on the table for the sense of just to have discussion. Can somebody either make a new motion or second Marion's motion?
I'll, I'll second Marion's motion.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the table now to uphold the cease and desist order made by Marion, seconded by Sarah. We can now have discussion on that motion. Marion, if you want to start, I have some comments as well, but since you made the motion, go ahead.
Well, basically, I agree that this, to work on this decent property far through the original permit, and I also, I, I know that the applicant said that they did not dispose any, they did not dispose any degree, if I want to call it that, on the property, but yet the zoning enforcement officers said that there's a degree there, so I'm concerned about that also. Basically, though, it does exceed the original approval, so I would say that that should be sufficient to.
Okay. Well, sir? This is Jim Went. I have a few comments. I, frankly, I share the applicant's frustration with the timing of this matter. I, I understand that this has been a situation that has been long in the making, so that the conditions of this site certainly did not recently appear. It's been an ongoing thing. So in that regard, I certainly share the applicant's frustration that it took as long as it did to get here. That said, I do agree that the findings support upholding this matter. I also hope that this is a matter that can be resolved beyond our authority, that we are just merely recognizing here that we agree or disagree with what the zoning enforcement officer's actions were. There's going to be proceedings far beyond this board's authority, that I really hope resolve this matter to the applicant's satisfaction and to the town's satisfaction, so the applicant can move on with his investment and have a mutually beneficial project for both him and the town. But, and if that is the case, then the action we take tonight, one way or the other, won't really amount to a whole lot, other than having on the record that we recognize and agree that the condition of the site as it is today, regardless of who may be responsible, the applicant is the current owner. So I would support the motion to uphold the cease and desist order, doing so with the sincere hope that this matter gets resolved ultimately outside the scope of our authority, without the need for legal proceedings on the enforcement matter, and that the Planning and Zoning Commission can bring this to a successful conclusion. But that said, I would support the motion for the cease and desist. Anybody else have any comments?
This is Ben. Jim, I, I agree. It's frustrating, because I feel for both sides here, and it's a tough decision. And I think, you know, as you pointed out, we're only looking at one particular area here that we can rule on, so.
Thank you. Sarah, any comment?
I think you said, you summarized the issue well. I certainly hope that there's more luck for the applicant or the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think the decision here is really whether or not to uphold the cease and desist, and I think it's the obvious choice here.
Thank you. Dom?
I'm on defense with this one. I totally see your point about, you know, they're going to have further deliberations, and, but, you know, every rebuttal that they came back with seemed legitimate. So on this one, I'm leaning towards the applicant.
Okay. I do not question the applicant's sincere desire to rectify this matter, and I hope he's he's successful in doing so. Anybody else have anything to say before we do a roll call vote? Okay, Marion, again, the motion on the table here is to uphold the cease and desist order. So that is what a yes vote would be, to uphold the cease and desist order, a no vote would be to agree with the applicant's position. Marion?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
No, no.
Okay. Jim Went, I vote yes, so the cease and desist order is upheld on a vote of four to one. Thank you all for your time and attention this evening. I don't believe we have any further business to discuss, so with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for your attention.